In favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of October 1st and 8th, 2013.
Also move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We will go down to committee reports at this time and call on Commissioner Campbell first.
Okay, the first report, the first meeting I want to report on is the Business Subsidy Policy Committee meeting that we had last Tuesday and action is going to be brought forward as item number four on the agenda today, so I will wait and speak to that issue while, when we get to that topic on the agenda because I do have some comments to make on that regarding recommendations from our committee. On Thursday I had, excuse me, I had the Greater Fargo-Martin Economic Development Quarterly Meeting and it was a good meeting and we got, we got financial reports from the group as well as really a highlight of projects and initiatives that, that they are working on and I brought a list of those with here that I can leave with Vicki and then she can make copies for you all, but they're, I mean, they're on many, many different fronts, they're doing an awful lot of good things to, certainly to promote the Cass and Clay Counties with economic development, so I think you'll find that interesting, so I'll have Vicki make copies of that. And then at, at 10:30 that same day, we had our Regional Juvenile Detention Meeting, actually it was at 10 o'clock, I had it in my calendar 10:30, so I was late in getting there, so there was, myself and a few others had a wrong time in there, but, but that meeting was, went well and budget was discussed and that's pretty much been, been resolved. We are looking at making some changes with, with the outside programs that we offer there and how we, how we would bill other counties for those services, but there'll be more to come on that as well, but that, that meeting also went very well and there's, certainly is good interest amongst our participating counties, which is a good thing. That's all I have.
John? Last week on Tuesday after, after our board meeting, I, I sat in on the meeting between Lakeland Mental Health Staff and the County Social Service. They meet like that at least annually and go over issues with contracts and with programs and try to figure out if there's any gaps and so on in service and it really, it's a good meeting because they really talk about a lot of the important things and I think it's part of the reason why Lakeland works so well for us, it's that they really, they really know what each side is needing and wanting and so that was a very interesting meeting, I had no participation other than just to, to observe, but it was, it was good. And I missed, I missed the meeting of the, the Board of the Historical Society because I was at my grandson's football game, so I had to choose priorities there. But that's all I had. Frank?
I, I was at the FM cog meeting, which I was unable to attend because of another committee.
Okay. On Tuesday, October 15th, I had the Local Advisory Council for Adult Mental Health, General Business, presentation by Arkham, Minnesota, Agency and Organization Reports from Social Connection, Lakeland, Prairie St. John's, Clay County, and there were a couple of others too. We discussed the Local Advisory Council Work Plan, we went over and made changes to the Local Advisory Council Surveys. Monday, October 21st, Land of the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging, General Business, Financial and Administrative Report, went over and discussed the 2014 Area Plan for the area on aging. It encompasses 21 counties in northwestern Minnesota and this plan will be presented in St. Paul later on this fall. One statistic that came out, the plus 65 population is much higher in our 21 county region than, than the rest of the state. And there was much more that took place in the meeting too, but I was there as an alternate and I found it very interesting. That is all I have and this time, Gary?
Wanted to do that.
Okay, our closed session with contract negotiations with Mike Rengel, could we have a motion to close the session?
So, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. At this time, we'll call the meeting back to order and we have our County Engineer, David Oberbo with us regarding highway maintenance position. Dave, welcome, nice to see you.
Good morning. Did everybody get a copy of the worksheet?
No, I don't think so, did you?
This is the salary calculation worksheet that HR puts together, it kind of gives a little snapshot of when the, you know, usually the employee that leaves is a long-term employee making a little higher wage, so it kind of shows where things are at. In this case, it's a little skewed because there's a lot of vacation and sick leave payout, so the annual savings is about $16,000 just due to a employee coming in, more on the beginner level of our salary grid, minus the payout of about $23,000, so it shows a savings of about a minus $7,000, but after that payout is kind of taken out, you can see it looks like it'll be about a $16,000 reduction over time as, as the person gets more of a senior employee, but I guess what I'd like to do is get approval to fill a highway maintenance position. It's the motor grader operator out of our Holly Hotline shop that's retiring after 18 years, he'll be, last day of, of work will be about the 6th or so of November, he's got some vacation to utilize in his last actual day on the county, it'll be the 31st of December. What we usually do is we do an internal request if anybody internally that's qualified and they, they've all got driver's licenses that apply, so we see if somebody wants to laterally move into this position and I expect there's a couple people that will apply, so more than likely we'll be advertising for a truck driver, because I think a couple of truck drivers have expressed interest into moving into the blade job, so I'd like to get permission once we get the internal things figured out to go to the newspapers and start looking for a candidate here before the winter starts coming too quick.
Okay, so all in your wishes.
Okay, my understanding is that you're going to be, I mean, you're going to be advertising for this position now and then if a truck driver fills it, then you'd apply, then you'd advertise for truck driver?
Yeah, and the advertising was kind of just an internal advertisement, you know?
Initially, no.
Yes, yes, correct.
Well, I think what we've done in the past, you would, you would, I think we should approve the filling of this position and if necessary, backfilling.
Sure.
Right? Because if you, because if you take somebody who's currently from truck and they go to grader, you don't want to have to come back here and ask them to replace the truck guy now, right?
Absolutely.
So, so I would, I would move the request to look for a new blade operator and if, if needed, replacement for a truck driver.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Gary?
Mr. Chairman, while, while Dave's here, he, he started to make a conversation to us earlier and I, I would like you to just give us a, just a couple minute report on our road conditions throughout the county.
Yep, prior to, a couple weeks ago, the roads were really coming in good shape, moisture contents were good, we've got a lot of rain and the rain didn't hurt us quite so bad as, as one might think, but there's still a lot of harvest yet to be done and I'm getting a lot of calls from, from township officials and even for some of the growers in the area and they're kind of asking suggestions on what they can do because they're starting to drag a lot of mud out on the roads, they're actually not only pulling the vehicles out of the field, but they're actually having to pull the field, the trucks pulling down the road even, you know, it's just so greasy, so it's going to be bad here for the next couple of weeks. Typically, what we do is we try to get some of that mud off the road and then we have to re-gravel, so I think there's probably going to be, and that's typical every year this time of year, we, we do some spot graveling, so there's going to be a fair amount of re-graveling going on here yet this fall before it freezes up, so that's what we're seeing right now.
John? I have a question about if there's a particular spot on the road that has gotten really bad, do our graders, are they the ones that should, that, that should ask them the gravel be brought in to fill up these spots or, you know, and our, we've got one by our place that, it sounds like the, the neighbors had to call and ask for the gravel, why wouldn't the maintenance operator automatically?
You would think they would.
Every time it rains, the water stands across the whole road right there.
Sure. Maybe there's a little lack being that we don't have a maintenance foreman, maybe there's just a little disconnect on communication, but they, they've been communicating with me, other things that they normally have communicated with their maintenance foremen, so I guess I'm not sure. We got a staff meeting Friday, I can definitely bring that up, that if they, you know, remind them, because they should know, if they've got road issues in their district, it's their, part of their job description, take care of that district, so they should know that, but a reminder would be a good thing.
Dave, yesterday I was up on Highway 75 going north and in and around 160 miles per hour. Could you speak to that? When, when did this occur? It was in the paper this morning, but Clay County hasn't been posted at 60 yet, has it, on Highway 75?
In fact, we had a Highway Committee meeting after this meeting and that's one of our agenda items, but I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I did get a letter a day or two ago from the traffic engineer in Detroit Lakes saying that on trunk highway 75, they will be posting all, all roads at 60 miles per hour.
Process of it.
Correct, yep.
John?
We've got, in the issue that I hear a lot of people talking about, that when they redid 75 south of, south of Moorhead, they, everybody thinks that the lane is smaller than it used to be and I think, I think what happened is that they put a rumble strip right on the, the white, white strip rather than half a few inches. People, if they need somebody, they tend to drive on the white strip and they hit, hit that rumble where it is and then they jump back.
Gives the impression that they moved it in. A lot of times, MINDOT will stripe, you know, typically the county roads are all striped at 12-foot lanes, so you have 24-foot between each white line. A lot of times, MINDOT will go 13 and a half foot lanes instead of 12, so I don't know if, maybe when they did make that, it's called the rumble stripe, what you're talking about, where they paint the, they paint the white line right in the, in the rumble strip, so maybe when they created a rumble stripe, maybe they moved it into 12-foot. I could take a look and see if they did change that location of that white fog line or not.
There was only one or two people that had mentioned it, I wouldn't even think about it, but many people are saying those, those lanes are narrower than they used to be.
And they might have went from 13 and a half back to 12, which is typically what you see, but trunk highways, they go a little bit wider.
There's, there's a foot or two outside of the white line of pavement.
Sure.
But you can't, you know, we use it now because the rumble strip is right there.
Yep. Yeah, I know there's been lots of controversy in the past, in fact, there's been quite a few counties, as you get closer to the Twin Cities area where they'll fill them back in, they'll, they'll build these rumble stripes or these rumble strips, you know, and then the, the public, if there's a lot of homes around there, they just, they protest them and they end up filling them back in.
Positive, I thought about yesterday, is that having those, having the rumble on the white line certainly will help for winter driving if you can't, visibility is poor, you know, you know when you're getting too far off the road, so.
Yep, yep, that's true.
Kim?
One last question, Dave, this goes back to our action that you requested on your replacement, the, so chances are we're going to have a, a new grader operator that we didn't have before, right?
Correct, yep.
So, what, what do we, what do we do in that regard, you know, we're replacing somebody from 19 years and what do we do when we put this guy in the grader? Do we, what's the training?
Well, typically, as far as running the machine.
Guy or gal, I guess, you know, whatever.
Sure. For running the machine, we bring one of our senior operators, typically it's one of our operators down from, from Barnesville, in the past, he's spent a little time with them, training him on, on how he likes to see the roads, you're, you're running kind of a pair for a while, working on the machine as well as, being that we don't have a maintenance foreman as well to, you know, go over the district and that, the neighboring, the neighboring guys that have worked with this operator for years are going to have to explain, well, they, they all kind of know where there's trouble areas, they know where they need to spend more time because of traffic and things like that.
Will this person be aware of like the proper crown and how, how much binder there should be within the, with the gravel and all that?
Sure.
Because that's all critical.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And some of those road material things are, you know, even though if a truck driver moves into there, he will already be somewhat familiar with some of those things because they hear talk about it, but as far as running the machine, you're right, that's very specific. We try to do cross-training throughout the year, so there's been a little bit of that being done, but there definitely needs to be more of that done, so as people are on vacation, we can take the truck drivers and put them in that, in that blade for a few days so they kind of get familiar with running it and they understand where the crown are and where not to cut too deep by the grass, because otherwise you, you end up cutting lower than the grass and you're holding water there too, so they call it curb and gutter, which kind of makes sense, but we'll more than likely be training with our existing operators, that's been our past practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you. The next item is review proposed amendments to Clay County Business Subsidy Policy with Tim Magnuson. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, wishers. I had passed out information earlier, you had some information in your packet, I think the only thing you really didn't get in your packet was the, the evaluation points. Well, let's see, it was back on the 15th that the Economic Development Subcommittee met, we, we meant to talk about tax abatements in particular, how we could make tax abatements work better as a business subsidy in Clay County than, than they were originally designed to. Our, our big emphasis was how can we use tax abatements as an incentive and if we use them as an incentive, how do we determine whether a project, how worthy a project is for that incentive? We had representatives from the county, the county attorney's office, the assessor's office, and the Greater Fargo-Martin, Greater Fargo-Martin EDC at that meeting and we talked about as an incentive utilizing a scoring methodology to go through a project's application and based on, on some evaluation criteria, score that application, see where it falls out in that scoring process. The EDC had provided me with some documentation from the city of Fargo, Cass County, and West Fargo, relevant to tax abatement scoring that they do and from that, I kind of revamped it to make it applicable to Clay County and the evaluation point system that you have in front of you is kind of what resulted from that. When I was done with it, I scored one of the applications that we have and it seems to work, you know, the EDC, I actually asked them to score it too and they said, it seems to work for you. So I guess what we're looking at today, with, with the adoption of an evaluation point system, there had to be some, some minor modifications in the wording of the, the business subsidy policy itself. It did not actually address anything as an incentive type of, of use, so in the business subsidy policy, there was a line added on the first page that, you know, the fundamental purpose of the subsidy policy is to encourage desirable development and using a but-for, but that it can also be used to provide an incentive to existing businesses seeking to expand or to new businesses seeking to locate in the county. That's probably the biggest amendment that was made there. We did have to make on page three, a couple of small changes because the policy was directed at redevelopment when it came to tax assessment and had to change that so it could be allowed for a new project as well as redevelopment in the policy.
Tim, does the compensation, under compensation, does the average salary, does that include administration, I mean, does it include everybody in the company or just line workers or?
No, it includes everybody. It would include any full-time equivalents, be they managers or, or whatever, right down the line, the compensation doesn't include the benefits package, it's just a screen up.
Also, I'm wondering on the, some of us are very, you know, cut and dry, it seems to me, like proposed building value, but what about percent of gross income with any local competition? How do you determine that?
That's where I call on the EDC.
Okay.
You know, that has to do with if there's competition in, in the, in the area or not, but that would be something that I'd be, I'd be working with the EDC.
I think what, I think what that's, what that's saying is, you know, it is, it's also there to try to protect the local competition.
Right.
So that, you know, if, if, if it appears that you're going to over, you know, put too much, too much of a particular market, in a market, then this applicant would receive a smaller point scale because, you know.
What if example, Menards is in place, Sam's is building next door, how would you figure out what percentage of the gross income is competitive and what's not? I mean, how would you?
Well, we do have.
Or Menards coming in when Max is over here.
Ooh!
They get it personal, how do you? Everybody's competition.
As long as we have the ability to get, with expanding, I think is the key, that's it. But, you know, they, you know, our responsibilities are, are also to make sure that we have a continuing flow of, of employment and that's kind of what this is all about, right? And so, you know, I, I think, I think, John, I think that, that fact there is and I think we might always have to lean to.
Someone else to greater.
To the, you know, this, this board in the future, whether it's us five or five others, will be the ones who review these and I would certainly hope that they would take into consideration the, the expertise of the Greater Fargo-Martin Economic Development in helping with some of these things down the road. We, we have that option to, as, as the board to do that. Did you have anything else, Sean?
No.
So, I, I'd like to speak to the major changes that are being proposed here today because what we, when we originally set up the subsidy process, our, our tax abatement really, it, it had this but-for clause in it, which really meant that, that the only, the only way they would get a tax abatement is if they financially couldn't do it on their own. And that, that in it, that in itself could be good to bring somebody in, but I'm going to give you a classic example that was in the media here recently regarding a situation where both, where a hotel was looking at going into West Fargo and they were looking at going into Moorhead and they were looking at the two different sites and fortunately for, on our side, they chose, they chose Moorhead. And part of that decision wasn't the fact, you know, if, if they would have just had this but-for, it's the only way they'd get tax incentives, but Moorhead was able to put something out there to get them to come. Now granted, what does that do to the other hotels? You know, sometimes having more of those is better. You know, it's like, it's, you know, if you go to a mall, one, one women's shoe store isn't going to do good in the mall, but if you have six of them there, they all thrive, it seems like, so. So that, that there's certain things in, in, in that business that does work, but then the other component of this is, is not only are we, are we trying to be competitive with, with new businesses coming into our county, but we're also saying, we're encouraging and we want to partner with our existing businesses who want to expand, because that is also equally important in, you know, when you have, you know, you've heard, you've hear some businesses moving from one community to another and, and was it because we weren't able to assist in any way to keep them here? So those are, those are really good things and I know this committee that Grant was there and Brian was there and the others that Tim had mentioned and there, I think we unanimously agreed that we should move forward with these changes and I would, I would hope that the board would support this action.
You don't need action on this today, do you, or is this informational?
I guess the intent, I believe it was action.
The intent was, the intent was to.
To adopt it.
To adopt, to adopt these changes. Making the process, yeah, I would, I would move the proposed changes to the County Business Subsidy Policy as well as the County Business Subsidy Process, as suggested.
Discussion. Frank?
You mentioned Moorhead, now, does the Moorhead have their own plan or do they go by this plan too?
Well, Moorhead has their own, but, but it's just like, it's just like in the city of Holly, the city of Holly has their own.
Right, and Barnes.
And Barnesville, but, so they can go to the city and then they can also come to the county. So they, they come to, they come to each government entity individually to see what kind of.
How many people have we got involved in this EDA thing so, I mean, townships, I should say people, how many townships are, have applied so far?
I think we've got seven total that are resolved and I think there's three or four townships in three communities.
Okay, I guess my next, are we going to train anybody on this? I mean, do the townships know what it's all about, like at the township meeting coming up, are we going to present this at all or, or do we think that townships are fully aware of this plan?
I.
I mean, there may not be a heck of a lot of development going on in some townships, but do, do they know what it is? I mean, are we going to present this to them somehow or?
We, we can, I mean, it's something that if, if they want to participate, they need to know at least minimally what, what is available and what they can tell parties that, that inquire to them. The intent is that they really don't have anything to do, I mean, you know, they're not directly involved because anything, all the applications come straight through the county.
Well, I was just wondering whether they know how it works, because I, I mean, I recently, you probably got the same call I did too, you know, how, from one of the townships who run the cities, you know, to see how to participate in this thing and.
Right, I've, it's pretty amazing, I'm not sure that we really thought there was anything out there, but ever since this has been discussed, I have probably had at least half a dozen different inquiries from individuals, from businesses who say, oh, what's, what can the county offer me?
Yeah, okay, that's what I was, I'm bleeding.
And then the last one, one of them I talked to was up in Hittardall.
Yeah.
But, you know, there are people out there that are interested in it, some of what we've got to offer, you know, may not be appropriate for them. When I talked to Karen Lauer down in Barnesville one day about tax increment financing, she mentioned that tax increment financing really doesn't wash unless you've got a project of three quarters of a million dollars or better. She said it just, for all the work that goes into it and what people get out of it, she said you've got to have a project that's $750,000 or better to really make tax increment financing work, but that still leaves the tax abatement. And the way that the wording has been changed here, it doesn't preclude somebody coming in who's got a little bit of a financing gap and seeking tax abatement from us doing a but-for on that to, to determine whether, what's the most appropriate way of looking at it.
Yeah, and, and the other thing there as well is, is, and we're not saying by what we're doing is that we're going to give up all of our, the tax that we would collect either. And that, that's part of the whole negotiating process with each individual applicant. Somebody might come in and say, well, I want 100% of what I would be paying in tax returned to me for the next five or 10 years, well, I, I don't think there's a really high chance of, of that happening, but, but it's, it's what can you do, so the county is still going to, in addition to getting this new business in or this new addition in, they're going to still see some tax benefits for the county upfront as well as then seeing what that does for the community in terms of jobs, so it's, so I look at it as a win-win.
And the information that I looked at that was passed from the, the EDC, the Greater Fargo-Martin EDC, a couple of the communities actually have, depending on what type of business it is, seeking a tax abatement, they have a graduation scale, you know, on, if you're asking for eight years of tax abatement and we agree to eight years of tax abatement, we might give you 100% the first year, 80% the second year and then we'll grade it down, you know, for the remaining years, so.
Is this the plan? I know Gilwood has their own EDA, whatever, but did they participate in this plan also or?
They, they participated in, in the original discussions that designed this plan.
Yeah.
There, Ken Park sat on the committee as well as Stan Thurlo, sat on the committee that helped develop this for the county.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, all, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Tim, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our last item on the agenda is to appoint delegates and alternate for Minnesota County's Intergovernmental Trust Annual Meeting. And Kevin Campbell and Grant Whalen are listed to be appointed. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think we're going to have to look at a change this year because I'm going to be unable to be there. So, so we're, we're going to want to have somebody who could go there in, in my place that can vote. So we have to change my, to somebody else as a delegate.
John, are you interested?
Well, I, no, I, I, usually so many other things going on at the meeting.
Are you going to?
I'm going to go through that. You know, I just wonder whether Grant is going, move him up to the. And you could be the alternate. And I could be the alternate. I mean.
Sure.
I don't know if Grant's going or not.
But what, but I mean, you could still vote as the alternate if you didn't.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. So do we have a motion to appoint?
I would, I would.
Grant as the, Grant as the delegate and Frank as the alternate.
Yes, I was going to make that motion, yes.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary? Anything else for the, go to the order?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a couple of quick announcements. We had open enrollment last week, 15th and 16th, and had a lot of packets going out. Just to remind everybody that the packets have to be back by 1 November. So we are getting some of those back already. We have a wellness screening this week, the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. That'll be up here. You can get blood pressure, cholesterol, bone density, all that done for free if you are a, under the county healthcare system or healthcare benefits. And the providers, healthcare and, and providers are going to be here on the 23rd, October 23rd, which I think is Wednesday tomorrow. And they'll be asking and answering any, answering any questions you might have about your packets. So if you want to change something in your healthcare plan or your long-term disability or whatever, they'll all be here to, to answer your questions.
Where are they going to be at?
They will be in, I think they're in Meeting Room A.
At what time?
Or I think they may have some in here as well.
Are they here all day?
Yeah, yeah. You can go online and sign up for a time slot. And I can get with you after this to show you how to sign up if you're interested in signing up for a time slot to meet.
You don't need an appointment for the health screen though?
No, you don't have to. They, they do have a sign, sign in for the health screening, but a lot of times you can just walk in as well. So.
Is that it?
Yep.
Vicky, anything?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen?
We're adjourned.